Good evening, thank you for joining the city council meeting, the regular meeting, Lathrow Village. Roll call please.
Councilmember Manorino Thompson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Present.
Councilmember Hammond.
Present.
Mayor Garrett.
Here. Thank you. I'm invite everyone in the audience and on council to say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of item L, approval of security cam- security camera contract.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Manorino Thompson.
Yes.
Agenda was approved, now we will adjourn the city council regular meeting and, well you gotta do that first, right? Okay, do that first.
Make a motion to adjourn the city council meeting and readjourn as is only board of appeals.
Has to be two or one?
First and second.
No, I would say has to be two things or has to be one?
Adjournment and then reconvene.
You do one motion, adjourn and reconvene.
Okay, sweet.
Second.
So we've been seconded and we are adjourned as the city council regular meeting. Roll call for zoning board of appeals.
Councilmember Manorino Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Here.
I'm here, thank you, yeah. First up for the zoning board of appeals is the ZBA bylaws.
Thank you mayor, so as council's aware, the city is going through the redevelopment ready communities process through the MBDC, part of their requirements is that all boards and commissions have up-to-date bylaws on file, while reviewing our files, we never saw anything approved for the zoning board of appeals, so we're just looking for council approvals today of some bylaws for the ZBA. Since the ZBA essentially is city council and you guys do have a pretty robust ordinance in the zoning enabling act, your bylaws are pretty straightforward and simple, so we're just trying to get these on file for RRC.
Thank you. Anyone want to make the motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the proposed zoning board of appeals bylaws as written.
Second.
It's been moved to second, is there any discussion?
These are pretty straightforward bylaws, and there's not much to them, they're consistent with bylaws that we have with other committees. This seems like a no-brainer to me.
Yep, agree.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Manorino Thompson.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Motion passes, now we have a public hearing, request to approve variance request 26600 Southfield Road Holbrook Auto Parts wall sign.
Thank you Mayor Garrett, welcome the applicant up to podium. We have a variance request here for a sign, principal wall sign, for the signage size. The building is located 26600 Southfield Road, this is a former multi-unit building, it formerly had five units in the building. The applicant now is the only tenant, they rehabilitated the exterior facade of the building, they're currently in the process of finishing up the rehabilitation of the interior, and instead of multiple signs being on this building, there'll be one principal wall sign. The applicant is asking for a variance of 22 square feet. Our ordinance allows for buildings in the mixed-use district to have a wall sign up to 64 square feet, so previously with the five tenants, each of them had a wall sign that could have been up to 64 square feet. This building also sits on Ramsgate and on, Ramsgate and Meadowwood, so they have two corners, and our ordinance permits for buildings to be, of this stature to have corner, side, principal wall signs on the corners. The applicant is not asking for that, they have created a facade that is a frame in the middle with red paneling, they would like to have one principal wall sign in the middle, so they're not looking to have any signage that abuts up to residential districts, and they, late last week, they did contact us about the existing non-conforming monument sign that is on their front along Southfield Road. They would like to keep it at the same encroachment into the setback along Southfield, but move it to the center into a peninsula inside of the parking lot. So this is not in their formal application, but they would like to either discuss that with you tonight and bring it back to you, or possibly take a look back at the sign and then come back at a later date about the centering of that at the same distance setback from Southfield Road, and Max is here to answer any questions you have.
How you doing? My name is Max and was checking construction, I'm the builder on site. I have some packets of some pictures and stuff, can I pass them out?
Thank you.
So currently we know we use a 64 square feet. Originally, we didn't plan on doing this, but the building, when we designed it, became more of a picture frame like Austin was saying, so because it was originally five tenants, now one, it doesn't make sense, it almost looks a little weird, with the building being 240 feet long, 26 feet tall, and eight by eight, so. So we would like to go for a bigger size, I think it'll fit the building better, it'll look a lot nicer, be more presentable. It's a beautiful building, spent a lot of money on it, and you know, I think it really looks good on Southfield Road. I think for the privilege.
So which one are you?
We are proposing for this one.
That sign in the monument?
Yeah, the sign in the monument, so the monument currently is on the south side of the property, we want to just move it into the middle, we don't want to make it bigger, we just want to move it more central, that's all we want to do.
Okay, go ahead.
So is the sign, is the sign that you're proposing, the one with or without the guy on top?
Both options, the both options would use the same on the square footage, they're just different options for the logo that we could get.
Okay, because I think the calculation of the square footage for our ordinance is going to be very different from those two designs.
Yeah, so that one would be preferable, but like I said, we would stay within the square footage, which he has with request.
So would it be this one?
Yes.
Okay.
And then for the monument, I don't think it made it onto this month's thing, but like I said, I wanted to bring it to your attention, something we want to do, we want to keep it same size, just we'll do a new break, new landscaping around it, make it nice and presentable, more central for both sides of oncoming traffic, it'll just be more feasible for the building and for brand awareness for Holbrook.
So because this wasn't at, the monument sign was not a part of this application, do you want to do it where they're all together and table this for now and then come back?
No, if we can do, we can do a storefront sign, I can come back next month for the monument. The reason is the building is almost done, owner wants to open, so if we can open up in the meantime, that would be okay, I would just like to put a sign, not about opening, but we would like a sign up front.
Yeah, I'm just not clear, the cute little guy on the, on the sides?
This is our guy.
No, I'm talking about in that, those guys are, is that what's proposed, is those little guys on the sides?
No, no, these.
So nothing on those?
No, we'd leave those empty. So originally this was five separate tenants, all five had existing wall signs, so that would have been, what, 320 square footed sign on the building?
Yeah.
We don't want 320 square footed signage, we just want enough to make our advertisement show for oncoming traffic.
Sure, no, I get that, so, but that picture is not an accurate depiction of what you're proposing?
No, the one from your hand is more accurate, we would just use this here, just the picture frame we did with the metal.
Okay, and nothing over the other ones?
No, those were just options that were thrown around.
Okay. Are those, are those still going to be entry doors?
No, there's only one entry door on the front, and then there's an emergency exit on the sides, there's only one main entry in the middle here, and that's it.
All right, so the one you're proposing is?
This one, this sign placed here, I mean your pictures.
That, that one, right.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I see it, but I'm just.
With the guy on top of the sign?
With the Holbrook guy.
Yeah, yeah, because this doesn't tell me which one, there's options here.
So me and my buddy both printed them, you got the other one, so it'd be like that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and then the monument here is currently on the south side of the property, we just want to set it right, we can build a nice, we want to, we'll build a nice landscaping around it, make it presentable, it just makes sense for traffic and this is, you know, a flagship store for them, so they're very proud to be in Lathrow Village and, you know, we'd like it to be a success.
Okay, anyone else have any question?
So you mentioned that one of the things, one of the reasons to do this is because you're trying to draw attention to the signage, right, to the storefront. Wouldn't having the monument sign accomplish that?
It will, but on the storefront, it shows a lot nicer, and plus it's such a huge building now, I mean the building was, it's almost 6,000 square feet of frontage, to put an eight by eight sign on it wouldn't make sense, it just, just wouldn't do it for that big of a building, you know. Like I said, we are happy to be in Lathrow Village and the owner's super happy, sorry he couldn't make it tonight, his birthday's on the dinner with family, but it would just make more sense for a bigger sign, it would be nicer.
Yeah, I mean, I personally have no problem with this, but is, you know, I guess I'm asking Scott, what, you know, what are we permitted to do?
So, well first you gotta, once the applicant's done with their presentation, we'll open up the public hearing, we'll let the public, and then you can begin your deliberations if there's a motion on the floor, but right now, the request is for that specific sign with the gentleman holding the piston on top, so that's what you can consider tonight, because that's what's been noticed, so the monument sign has not been noticed, so that's not up for consideration. You can, you can grant the relief request, the maximum amount of relief requested, if that's the decision of this body and is supported by their fact finding, or you could give them a smaller variance to, something that you might feel, or the body might feel is more appropriate, that still exceeds the ordinance, but, or you can outright deny the request, so.
Right, but like I said, I don't have a problem with this, because I'd rather see this than five signs, which they would be permitted to do, but in order to grant the variance, do we need to find that it is?
A hardship.
Yeah, you need to find a practical difficulty or hardship.
A practical difficulty.
And just to clarify, they wouldn't, because they're a single business, they wouldn't be allowed to have five smaller sign, or five eight by eight signs, it's per individual business with ground floor storefrontage, so, yeah, the prior, the prior use of that building did have five ground, ground floor separate businesses, so they did have, or were able to have up to five signs, so this applicant is not entitled to that same benefit, I guess.
So, so the public hearing is open?
I have to make a motion.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for the sign variance request for 26600 Southfield Road.
Second.
It's been moved to second, the public hearing is open.
Can I ask clarification?
Sure.
Is this public hearing comment, is that separate from the regular ones that are part of the council meetings, the two different times?
This is about Holbrook Auto Parts.
I know that, but I'm asking, is that separate from those other two times in a normal council meeting?
Yes, this is, this is the, a meeting of the zoning board of appeals, so there, the agenda for the council still has public comment, this is a separate public hearing.
Okay.
Public comment for items on the agenda.
No, 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 this is for the public hearing, the public hearing specifically for this business, for Holbrook.
Okay.
Well.
Yep.
Whatever you would like to.
Could I ask you to take that side, put this here, thank you very much. Well, I want to express my opposition to the signage, and I'm sorry for you that you're caught up in this, but I'm concerned that we don't have any understanding of historic preservation in Lathrick. We had a poorly attended, poorly advertised historic district commission meeting, I didn't even see about it, because you didn't get the normal notification that you do, it was very, very short. Lathrow Village, Southfield Road Historic District also includes the architecture all along Southfield Road, and it's supposed to be either mid-century modern, or it's supposed to be federal-style architecture. It is not supposed to be the kind of things that have gone up ever since. That is the antithesis of what Lathrow, Southfield Road stretch is supposed to look like, and I would note that while the historic district commission doesn't support preservation, and the historical society's been turned into a private club, which is anti-preservation, the reality is property values are very much impacted, not only by the architecture in the neighborhood, but they're impacted by joining that with Southfield Road. That's what the historic district commission was supposed to oversee, that's what the historical society was supposed to be doing, because as I've said many times, now virtually all of the houses and much of Southfield Road would come under the 50-year period in which they could be included, and I don't mean any disrespect to you, because I understand what you're doing, but as somebody whose ties go back 74 years, whose mother was a founder of the historical association and so forth, it bothers me tremendously that property values, which already aren't keeping up with their neighbors in real dollars compared to what they did 20 years ago, they're going up for inflation like everybody's does, but not in parallel with Birmingham and Beverly Hills, and the one thing you could be doing was expanding the historic district and preserving this architecture, the kind I told you about that you can watch online, the video that my mother wrote the script for, and that Pat Gore did the video for, it tells you, 20 years ago, when you drove down Southfield Road, it said you could mistake Lathrick for Colonial Williamsburg, and you could, it was beautiful architecture. In 10 years or less, that has been lost, and you are reaching a tipping point, if you continue to trash Southfield Road, bring in inappropriate businesses and inappropriate architecture, any chance you have of extending the historic district is going to go out the window, and when that happens, that's your last best chance to basically enhancing property values. You don't have the schools anymore, you don't have the things that we had 20, 30 years ago, but you do have the possibility to protect the architecture, and that means the architecture of the businesses, not just the architecture of the houses in the neighborhood. It's not too late to do something about it, and I recognize that you're further down.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Garrett, City Council, other Lathrow Village individuals. I'm usually a real stickler to, you know, signages and how it looks, and, you know, with the way this company, what they're doing, they're taking that whole block of buildings, you said five of them, taking five buildings, putting a, to me, it looks like a nice sign in the middle of it, rather than seeing a mirage of five other individual buildings or businesses in there. It looks first class to me, 6,000 square foot, a company coming into Lathrow Village at 6,000 square foot, welcome them, that's what I would say. I mean, the sign looks professional, he's got a beautiful presentation here, you're going to move the, what is it, monument sign to the middle, welcome them with your arms. Thank you, Roger Lynn.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Ellen Greenia of San Dan, and I walk past this building every day, I live across the street of Southfield, so I have been anticipating, and like Roger, I look forward to a large business in Southfield, on Southfield Road in Lathrow Village. I want to see the parking lot full of cars, so that it will help everyone of us that live here, so, yay.
Thank you. Anyone else? And the public hearing is closed?
You have to make a motion.
I'll make a.
Motion to close public hearing for the sign variance request. Second.
Just moved to second, the public hearing is now closed, okay. Next on the agenda, public.
No.
So I'll, oh, I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, it's been a long time.
I'll make a motion to approve the variance request at 26600 Southfield Road for Holbrook Auto, Auto Parts wall sign.
Second.
It's been moved to second, is there any discussion?
Yes, so one question I have, I just want to make sure consistently, the, the application is asking for a seven foot by 12 foot wide, but the picture you have in here is a 17 foot wide sign, so I want to make sure we're on the same page.
So, listen, we would like to do bigger is better, but we also want to cooperate with you guys, we've taken pride in cooperating this entire process, you guys have been awesome to work with, Austin's been, you've helped, so we would like bigger, of course, just like anybody advertising their business would, but we also want to be compliant with you guys, so.
Okay, so, but you're asking for a seven, seven foot by 12 foot, is what you're, what you have in the application?
Yes, that's what we're.
I just want to make sure, okay.
He's, so, Steve Reyes, I'm the new generation sign representative, I'm the owner of the sign, so at the end, when we talk, I know there's like, that picture shows 84 square feet, but the owner, he called me then, you know, was trying to talk about it, so actually, this presentation is 150 square feet.
But that's not what's in the application?
Right, but that's not what's in the application.
It's not in the application.
Yeah.
So that's why he's trying to explain to you, we're trying to get the bigger.
Right.
But if that's, you know, we don't want to make it like a hardship for nobody, but we are loving to have that size of the sign, 150 square feet.
But, that's.
The application that was received was for the 84 square feet total, so that is what's being considered?
I was just saying, if there's going to be an increased request, so over what was in the application, then that application needs to be amended, because this body can only consider what has been provided to them, what's been noticed to the public, in terms of the variance that, that this property's requesting, so.
You're going to decide, so they are approving 84.
We didn't approve yet.
We didn't.
I've been trying to approve that, but as we talk to the owner, we're going to discuss the manner of.
Well, because there had been some discussion about whether or not you wanted to table this until you brought the monument, you don't want to do this.
Yeah, because they're so close to opening, we're literally doing some counter-talks, refacing the parking lot, and then we're done.
Well, the only thing in front of us then is.
Is the 84 square foot.
That's, that's all we can do today, yes.
So the only thing I was going to bring up with the monument is we are resealing and striping the parking lot and make it all clean black.
Oh, great.
I would like to hopefully get an answer with the monument before I do that, just because I'm going to have to open, I know it's not going to happen. I'd rather be transparent than present, we are going to have to open the floor to run the electrical, so I'd like to tell you guys about that before, but if that's the case, I'll wait, I'll put the store sign up, but I'll wait for the floor and then I'll.
If it gets a break.
No, I'm waiting for you. From this here.
So, one of the concerns that we've been hearing from residents lately about new signage that's been going up in different storefronts along Southfield Road, is that it's so bright, and there's, you know, residential properties just across the alley of the businesses that are along Southfield Road, right, and then some of the signage is high enough and bright enough that at night, people, you know, their, their homes are impacted by, the light is actually shining onto their homes, so, and I know that our ordinances are, you know, have restrictions in place in terms of how many foot candles of light and the, and a certain distance, and, so, I, the concern I have is a sign of this, of this size, that's larger than what our ordinances allows, still needs to be in compliance with the light pollution ordinances.
Of course, and it's mostly backlit, it's not a straight, like, light being pushed out, so he's signing everything.
Yeah, so the sign, we see, if we look at this background, the whole thing that's just the panels, like the aluminum structure, the light's going to be only the wording and the white trim, and the guy is going to be, this is all backgrounds, and the guy is going to be lit, and so it's not, this blue and red is not going to be lit, it's like a kind of, you know, backer for the sign, but the light's going to be only on the words and the guy.
Right, so, and the light shouldn't extend so far that it reaches?
Yeah, yeah, we do, we use Romans, in some cities, they ask us like, how many Romans you have to use there, that's, we can, we can, we'll be fully compliant, complying with the ordinance, and then, this, this, this sign's going to be for sure on a timer, so most likely, these kind of businesses, they close at 7 o'clock or 8 o'clock and sometimes, so the sign's going to be lit at two hours after the business, and then you don't even need the sign there, so most likely it's going to be like 10, 11 o'clock, the sign is going to be, most likely turned out, because it's going to be on a timer for the, yeah.
Yeah, that's great, because then a person doesn't have to think to turn the switch.
We put everything on timer, except the parking lot lights are just for that, that's for safety purposes.
Sure, yeah.
Those are all brand new, the electric lights, very nice.
Thank you.
And we talked about in the study session, the practical difficulty could be considered, it's the speed of Southfield Road and the distance that that building has set back, correct?
Correct.
Anything else? Okay, roll call.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Manorino Thompson?
Yes.
You have your approval now if I have.
No, thank you so much, Chris.
I'll make a motion to close the ZBA session and reconvene as, as the city council meeting. Second.
It's been moved to second, roll call please.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Manorino Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
We are back in session, and we are at the public comment for items on the agenda, speakers are limited to three minutes. Anyone that wants to be heard, please come to the podium. Anyone?
Well, since council has just approved the sign, and another sort of business that you never would have seen in Lathrick before, I want to talk about when Lathrick was upper middle class, and we had upper middle-class community appropriate businesses.
Let me stop right there, is that, is this going to go for anything that's on the agenda for tonight? This is only for things that's on the agenda?
You've just approved something, which I have an ability to comment on the fact that you've just approved something.
So is that, yes.
That's a different body, that was his only board of appeals, this is the city council.
So that's what I'm asking you, those questions, so that's a no?
I'll do it later.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else want to be heard during public comment, for anything that's on the agenda? Okay, that's close, let's go to the consent agenda, take a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second, discussion, so roll call please.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Manorino Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Consent agenda is approved, and I apologize, there was something in there, but it's just the spelling of Roger Lynn's name, I'll get it later, sorry, sorry. Let's go into action requests for consideration, first is a request to approve ordinance 202503, an ordinance to amend Article 2 sign ordinance.
I can introduce this one, so this is the second reading of proposed amendments to the sign ordinance, there were no changes from last month's first introduction, the sign, these amendments, in summary, they add definitions for, change the definition for window signs to classify both electronic and non-electronic, window signs as window signage, it is, sets a maximum size limit, which is consistent with what is currently 10% of the open window space can be covered with now both electronic or non-electronic signs. These amendments also set limitations on the brightness, which we just discussed with the zoning board of appeals, and that is established at .3 foot candles above the ambient light at the property line. There's also an amendment to the number of window signs, electronic window signs, previously businesses were allowed to have one, this amendment allows for two, and then it also allows for window signage, not only the commercial district, but the MX, as well as the Village Center and Gateway Online.
Thank you.
And it also has a six-month grace period, is that if I remember correctly?
Yeah, I believe it was December.
Yeah, okay.
Who would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the, adopt the ordinance twenty, twenty-five dash oh three, an ordinance to amend Article Two sign ordinance.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Manorino Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Kanter?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Uh, the ordinance was approved on the second reading of it. Um, no. That's approved here. Next is a request to approve ordinance twenty, twenty-five oh four, an ordinance to amend Chapter Ten, animals by amending Article, sorry?
All right, where is it?
Don't worry about chickens. We're going to talk about chickens right now.
Okay, you're going to do this one. So, this is an amendment to the existing animal ordinance. There's two areas of modification here. One is increasing the overall size of the chicken enclosure and the run from eighty square feet to a hundred and forty square feet, and increasing the number of allowable hen births from three to six. And there's no changes from the first reading.
Thank you.
Uh, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty, twenty-five dash oh four, an ordinance to amend Chapter Ten, animals by amending Article Four, chickens, Section Ten dash one thirty-one, number limits in Section Ten dash one thirty-two, structure.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Manorino Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Kanter?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes. Motion passes. Next is a request approval ordinance for twenty, twenty-five oh five, an ordinance to amend Chapter Eighteen, Business Four. No, it might, wrong one? No, it says landlords and tenants.
All right, Madam Mayor, so this is the second reading of the amendments, proposed amendments to the landlord-tenant ordinance. This, these amendments specifically add the definition of short-term rental to our landlord-tenant ordinance, as well as require a local contact person. The one change from the first reading was that the, that local contact person is required to live within thirty miles of, within thirty miles of the city, whereas the first reading, it was proposed that they be located within twenty miles of the city.
Thank you. We would like to make a motion.
Motion to adopt ordinance number twenty, twenty-five dash zero five, an ordinance to amend Chapter Eighteen, Businesses, Article Four, Landlords and Tenants, Section Eighteen dash one eight one, definition, Section Eighteen dash one eight four, rental license.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Garrett?
Abstain.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Manorino Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Kanter?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next is a request to approve ordinance twenty, twenty-five oh six, an ordinance to amend Article Eighteen, Business by adding a new article, Article Seven, Short-Term Rentals to provide for the licensing and regulation of short-term rentals in the city of Lethrick Village.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, this, as you indicated, this is the second reading of this short-term rental ordinance. This creates a new article, which identifies specific conditions that individuals intending to utilize a property as a short-term renter are required to comply with, including licensing, inspection requirements, established standards and regulations, as well as establishes violations and penalties for failure to adhere to those standards and regulations. The two changes from the first reading are similar to the landlord-tenant license. The local contact person is required to live within thirty miles as compared to twenty miles, and then there was a change previously, the first reading, on-street parking was prohibited for short-term rental use. That has been amended to allow up to two vehicles to be utilized, up to two vehicles to utilize on-street parking. They are still required to comply with the city's regulations with respect to overnight parking, and any additional vehicles that exceed the two are required to be parked on-site.
Thank you. We would like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty, twenty-five dash oh six, an ordinance to amend Chapter Eighteen, Businesses by adding a new Article Seven, Short-Term Rentals to provide for the licensing and regulation of short-term rentals.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Manorino Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Abstain.
Uh, Mayor Proton Kanter?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have the request to approve Police Department Floor Replacement Project.
I'm going to turn it on over to Lieutenant Zane. Good evening, City Council. Part of the capital improvement plan for the city was to replace the flooring at the Police Department. We have several holes. The floating wood floor that we had from a Home Depot grant back in the day is failing, and failing is hard, and we were looking to hire a company to come out, remove the existing floating wood floor, patch any necessary holes in the floor, and sand it down and, and make it into a nice-looking floor again. And we're going to actually just leave it concrete, polished concrete. We had a budget of fifteen thousand. We received several quotes, and Comer and Cross came in at fourteen thousand three hundred and fifty, which is just a few hundred dollars under, under budget.
Okay, thank you. We would like to make a motion.
Motion to award the Police Department Floor Replacement Project to Comer and Cross concrete for an estimated price of fourteen thousand three hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? For the floor that's there, the wood floor that you got from Home Depot, there's no warranty on it?
No, it was given to us. It was under a grant. It was free, completely free installation. Everything was free.
Okay.
That was back in probably two thousand ten-ish, and this floor is pretty bad now.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Proton Kanter?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Manorino Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we have the request to approve Police Department, excuse me, request to approve the purchase of Police Department body cameras.
And good evening again. We are coming to you. In two thousand twenty-two, the Lethrick Village, I applied for a federal grant, which is no longer available, which awarded us a one-to-one match in two thousand twenty-two for just under eighteen thousand. The original grant was for GTAC body cameras. That came with a five-year warranty. And just three years in, our officers are experiencing some significant issues with the body cameras. Batteries aren't lasting entire issues. We're having software issues. This was right at the turn when GTAC came out with a newer, much better streamlined version of their body cameras. And in speaking with our GTAC representatives, we explained to them we had a five-year warranty on these, and they shouldn't be failing the way they are, and I believe the company did the right thing. They stepped up, and they are offering new body cameras, thirteen new body cameras to replace our existing thirteen body cameras for the amount of sixteen thousand six hundred and seventy-four dollars. And what this does, it actually comes with a new five-year warranty, and this actually comes with battery warranties as well, which is the previous body cameras did not come with. Now, in that federal grant, we were, we were required to match nine thousand dollars. The city was prepared. Through that grant process, the federal grant program came to me and said that they had some extra funds available, and ended up actually giving us the extra nine thousand, so the city actually didn't pay for any of our body cameras originally. So, this, that money went back into our coffers. So, and with that being said, we also realized that under capital improvements, City Council also approved a fifteen thousand dollar budget for our awning project behind this Police Department. But I'm talking to the chief, what we were getting quotes for, we just couldn't compete with what we thought would look good for the city and, and what the quality that we're getting, so we, we chose to kind of scrap that project for now, and maybe without a better allocation of the resources right now, would be going to getting our officers body cameras that are, that are lasting them entire shifts, and which we all know how awesome body cameras are for, for law enforcement, citizen contacts. So, we're coming to you to request that money.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of new Police Department body cameras and associated equipment from Midwest Public Safety for an estimated cost of sixteen thousand six hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
So, have you guys looked at any other body camera vendors?
Yeah, so there's pretty much three on the market right now, and the reason we're sticking with GTAC is, back in two thousand twenty-two, I was required to get three quotes. I got quotes from Axon and WatchGuard by Motorola, which are pretty much the three major players on the market right now of body cameras. And three years ago, Axon was sixty thousand, and they've gone up. And same thing with WatchGuard by Motorola. They were just under thirty-eight thousand. So, GTAC put, giving us the best deal right now, understanding what they've kind of put us through, and also with our warranty that we already had, we'd already paid for, well, through the grant. They were well under those quotes from three years ago, so Axon would be even more now, and so would Motorola. So, I did not go with any other quotes, just because of the insane amount that those were.
Understood.
And then actually on top of that, Council, GTAC will be buying these body cameras, our existing body cameras back. Not for much, but it'll be roughly about another thousand bucks we'll be receiving back for the old infrastructure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Kanter?
Yeah.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Manorino Thompson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we have the request to approve Eagle Cross Connection Control Contractor.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Eagle, formerly DEQ from the state, requires municipal water supplies to cross-control inspections every single year throughout their communities and water supply. The city has used HydroCorp for a number of years. Their contract expires at the end of this month, and we're looking to approve a two-year agreement with them. With Martha and our Water Department, we did explore the opportunity of potentially going with another vendor. However, HydroCorp's really the only player in southeast Michigan. Every now and then, you will come across an occasional master plumber who is certified from the state by doing this. Unfortunately, they don't come with, they, they cannot handle the same scope that HydroCorp does, with all the necessary reporting and inspections and monitoring, things like that. So, we're looking for a two-year extension with HydroCorp tonight.
Thank you. We would like to make a motion.
Motion to approve the two-year Cross Connection Control Program Renewal Service Agreement with HydroCorp.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
I'm curious about the justification for the increase in the monthly payment amount in year two. Do they provide any explanation?
Inflation.
Just cost of living or inflation or whatever?
Pretty much, every single year, even looking at the previous old contracts, they always increased year-over-year.
That was consistent with the previous HydroCorp contracts?
Yep.
Is there any discussion about going into a multi-year contract?
Right now, talking with HydroCorp, they only like doing two-year contracts. They don't give a necessary reason why, but two years is pretty much what their standard is.
And so, they, they need to get in the building to do the cross-connect check, or is it?
Correct, yep.
So, would that be an opportunity for a discussion you and I had earlier for, to be able to inspect these water meters and connections that Martha was talking about?
Yes, yeah, and HydroCorp mainly, that's how we've actually caught a few commercial, because that's their main inspections. But, yeah, during their reports they submit, we can definitely see if there's any issues, but we can definitely have that conversation with them, make sure meters are working while they're in the businesses.
Yeah, excellent.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Manorino Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Kanter?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we have the request to approve Water Meter Cell Tower Gateway Electrical.
Thank you, Mayor. So, we have slowly been progressing through the permitting process for installing water meter gateways on the two cell towers throughout town. The gateways allow for essentially remote reading of the mirrors throughout the city. While one gateway has officially been installed at the DPW site, the Michigan First site still needs to finalize permitting. While the gateways get installed, we still have additional electrical to do to make sure they function properly, so we solicited some quotes from local electricians to see if they can do, handle the work. And the group we're recommending is Lighthouse Electrical Service. In your packet, you'll notice the quotes only represent one tower, but they are all willing to do both. However, they could not write the formal quote without the actual other gateway being installed yet. They're unwilling to do that, but they're all open to doing the work since it will be similar.
Okay. We would like to make the motion.
I'll make a motion to award Lighthouse Electrical Service the Water Meter Cell Tower Gateway Electrical Project for a total estimated cost of fifteen thousand three hundred and sixty dollars.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
So, the fifteen, so we can pretty much assume that it'd probably be about another fifteen for the-
No, it, the, it's seven, it's roughly seventy-five hundred bucks a piece.
Oh, so you're, okay, got it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's why I went for that total cost.
Yeah.
So, this cost reflects the anticipated cost of installing electrical for the second gateway?
For both of them, yes.
Yeah, and the electrical for the gateway at City Hall, is that already in, I can't remember, is that already installed, or is that, is that upcoming as well?
That's upcoming as well, but that's the, yeah, we had a couple of things finalized with Ferguson at this one. As we know, the pole's up. They still got to take the other one down. I'm figuring out why that one's delayed. That was supposed to come down about a month ago, and once that's down, the electrical will have to finalize there.
Okay, and so it's under budget, so it was just, which is good. It's significantly under budget.
Yeah, significantly under budget, which, after the last couple of ones, which were, you know, every, everything's higher, higher, higher. This is beautiful. Significantly under budget. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Proton Kanter?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Manorino Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes. Motion carries. Next, we have the request to approve City Hall RTU Two compressor replacement.
Fortunately, this is an unbudgeted expense I'm looking for Council to approve. So, as Council's noticed, at certain times, especially this summer, the air conditioning has not worked at all on the second floor of City Hall. So, our day-to-day maintenance crew, Denny's Heating and Cooling, was able to come out. We diagnosed the problem, which we realized the first-stage compressor on the RTU that serves this floor has completely failed. We are able to bypass the system to have it run on one compressor, so it is currently somewhat functioning. It has its moments, but if that second-stage compressor fails, then we would have to replace the entire RTU. So, we got a quote from Denny's. Due to the cost, we did reach out to numerous other HVAC commercial contractors. Unfortunately, due to the nature of the fix, they all required an assessment fee before giving us a quote, even though we knew exactly what the problem was. So, in order to save some money on that, we are just requesting to go with Denny's instead of eating the assessment fee plus this fixed cost.
Thank you. We would like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Denny's Heating and Cooling RTU dash two, first-stage compressor replacement at an estimated cost of seventy-five fifty-six.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Eventually, this thing's going to die, and we're going to have to replace it, so.
Well, it's funny, because what I was thinking about, like, at the finance town halls that we've been doing, you know, we, we use this as an example, and, you know, we haven't been able to replace, we don't have the revenue to be able to replace the whole unit or the whole system, and we just keep putting more and more money into replace compressors. And we did, what, ten thousand, seven thousand, five thousand, like, this winter, this past winter?
Probably four.
Four, whatever, so we're always putting four or five, you know.
So, this is my question, like, how long do we anticipate this repair is going to last? When are we going to have to put another five, six, seven grand?
A brand-new compressor should give a good life for a while. Denny's, actually, they don't give you a hard timeframe, because they won't guarantee it. But that, that's why we also put in the memo the estimated cost to replace this. Just a unit itself, without any of the actual removing and putting a new one on, is roughly thirty grand. Then, as you guys know, we are doing, we're planning out the roof project. Part of that was actually working with Denny's to get a quote to just remove our equipment, put the exact things back, and that's over thirty thousand dollars just doing that. So, these are large pieces of equipment. They're not cheap to replace. The hope, the hope would be this buys at least another five to seven years, but this unit's rather old at this point, so.
So, help me, remind me, if you can, about when we put together the budget proposal for the current fiscal year, right? And there was the priorities of different things. Was replacement of this thing on that list?
The replacement of RTUs, no.
Why not?
I, I think it's one of those things where, actually, as staff, we're not HVAC contractors, so we don't know. We know they currently work, and that's also one of the aspects where I put in the CIP when we talked about doing a facilities condition assessment. That's where you get these people that specialize in this type of equipment that can tell you exactly-
They would identify those things.
They would have identified those type of things, where they would have told you how old it was, what its expected life is, and then estimated replacement cost.
Yeah.
So, unfortunately, with specialized equipment like this, we kind of have to go day by day and hope. But that's also why we have contractors like Denny's, who can at least do this work if we come into predicament.
Yeah, okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Manorino Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Kanter?
Yes.
Sorry, it's been approved. Request to approve two thousand seven general obligation bond payment acceleration.
Thank you, Mayor. So, we did talk about this during the study session, but just for everyone else, the city issued general obligation bonds in two thousand sevens for some infrastructure projects. The bond only has a couple of years left to payment, so city staff is requesting Council's approval to accelerate- The bond only has a couple of years left of payment, so city staff is requesting Council's approval to accelerate our payments. So we can close out this bond and save a year's worth of interest. A couple of reasons why we'd like to do this, one, besides saving the interest cost. The water, the utility funds have a healthy fund balance, so it can absorb this, this fiscal year. And on top of that, working with the Bank of New York Mellon has not been the easiest thing for staff. As you guys can see in the packet, the amortization schedule they have, they have given us previously does not match the invoices they constantly send to the city. So from our perspective, the sooner we can close this out, the better.
Who would like to make a motion?
Motion to approve the two thousand and seven general obligation limited tax bond payment acceleration and allow staff to file all necessary paperwork to redeem and close this bond.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, it seems like a no-brainer, I mean, given the fact that we've, we do have the money to cover it in the Water and Sewer Fund and it saves us three thousand dollars.
It'll save us the thirty-five sixty-two?
Well, but we have five hundred dollars for paying it off early.
I know, that's how they get you, they charge a five hundred dollar redemption fee, so that total savings will be about three thousand dollars.
Okay.
Yeah, and this entire thing is already budgeted for over the next two years.
Yeah, next year it would have been, this year the half of it was budgeted for.
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Bye-bye.
Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Manorino Thompson.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Cantor.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, the request to approve Master Plan and Parks and Rec Plan Update Proposal.
Thank you, Mayor. So the city's current comprehensive plan was finalized in two thousand and twenty-one and is due for a formal review and update to represent where the city currently is and what the vision for the future is. We've talked about this study sessions during the budget. So including your packet is a proposal from Giffords Webster to update our plan to meet all our necessary standards. On top of having a review as required by Michigan Planning and Abening Act and necessary for grant submissions. And then, one major win, thanks to Austin and Tom and the Community Economic Development Department. They worked with the MEDC and instead of paying the roughly forty thousand dollars project visiting cost, we did receive a twenty-eight thousand dollar grant for this. So our total costs for this next year will only be just over eleven thousand if it's awarded tonight.
Thank you.
We'll make a motion to approve the Lathrop Village Comprehensive Plan Update via Giffords Webster for a cost of thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion?
So it's a reimbursement grant, so we had to pay the money upfront and then we're gonna get it back at some point.
Yeah, that's, everything with MEDC for the most part is reimbursement. So yeah, we'll, we'll complete this project, they'll review it, make sure it meets their standards as outlined in the grant agreement, and then they'll send us a check. And as you guys know, master plans, they're, take a year plus, so realistically, we won't see this money until the next fiscal year.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, just, I'm sorry. I was just gonna say, you know, the master plan and the recreation plan, this is where we're gonna want a lot of input from the residents. Because the master plan and the recreation plan help define the direction that the city is gonna take for the next five years. So just a little plug and advertisement to residents to start thinking about what, what you want the city to look like from both a city perspective as well as recreation and be ready to participate in the process and give us that information so that we can represent it.
Yeah, and the plan put together by Giffords Webster has several opportunities for community input, so we hope people take advantage of that.
Anything else? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Manorino Thompson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we have the city administrator report.
Nope, nope.
Sorry, we amended the agenda, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, which one?
Approval of the security, certain security cameras.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Thank you for amending the agenda, I'm gonna turn this on over Lieutenant Zhang.
Meeting City Council. The Lathrop Village City Hall and DPW currently uses Verkata for all of our surveillance systems. Twenty-seven cameras throughout the city, mostly on, obviously all in City Hall and then three or four over at DPW, I forget the number, I think we have three there. City staff has been working, City Minister Mike Green and I have been working with Verkata, getting a formal proposal, which is included in your packet tonight from Trendseth Communications Group for asking for renewal of one year in the amount of six thousand, two hundred and forty-nine eighty-one. And along with those cameras, it also services all of our door locks and our key fobs within the city.
Thank you. Would like to make a motion.
Motion to approve a one-year extension for Verkata licenses with Trendseth Communications Group for a cost of six thousand, two hundred and forty-one, forty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion?
How did it compare to the cost of the, what we budgeted for?
This, this is one of those technology line items that's split throughout the budget, so this fits within it. Yeah, one of the things, like we mentioned in the memo, they, they were pushing multi-year agreements and Lieutenant Zhang and I are in favor of that, however, they require upfront payment for it. So while we would love to just do a five-year agreement, they wanted north of twenty-five thousand dollar check right now, which we did not budget for. So that's why we're pushing them hard, hey, for the one-year agreement, next year if the budget allows, we'll probably request that three to five-year, but unfortunately this year we cannot.
Is this also gonna be, I thought we were talking about doing an upgrade to the key fobs to be in a card reader or is this?
That's independent. They're all on a certain frequency and you can have different cards with different access features. But that's not independent of Verkata, their card readers will read a million different types of rears, of cards.
Okay. Anyone else? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Jennings.
I'm sorry, we did the motion, right, yes, roll call, thank you.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Manorino Thompson.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Motion carries. Now, we have the city administrator report.
Nothing today, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, after that, we will have the.
City Attorney.
Nothing for me.
Thank you. Next, we have the reports of boards, commissions, and committees, which is first is the Finance Review Committee.
Yeah, we're just moving forward with doing town halls to educate residents on the upcoming headly override. We did one last week and then we've done several, I think we've done seven or eight now that have been in resident homes. We got two more of those coming next week and the next one at City Hall will take place on September sixteenth at seven P.M. And that's it.
Thank you. The DDA, even though we had canceled. Cancel the meeting because of no quorum. Planning Commission?
The Planning Commission is meeting tomorrow night and at seven o'clock in this very room. Our agenda includes, we're gonna be electing officers for the coming year amongst the current Planning Commission members. There's a site plan review for the address at two six zero two one South Field Road for a screen printing business. I assume is gonna be making some modifications, so they need a site plan review for that, modifications to the building. And we're having a public hearing around new proposed ordinance language for cryptocurrency machine ordinances.
You're scheduling a public hearing.
Sorry, we're having a discussion to schedule a public hearing regarding, but we have been having conversations around cryptocurrency machine ordinances, so this is the next step to actually get that under formal consideration, scheduling a public hearing.
Thank you. Parks and Rec.
Yeah, just a quick rundown of some of the upcoming events. August twentieth, we have a Climate Action Household that, a presentation at Dennis Normo's house, which will be very, very interesting. He's, he's brought his utility costs down to, you know, I think, what was it, a few dollars through green initiatives. So there are a few spots left in that one, so you can register for that if you're interested. Food Truck Friday, this Friday, the food truck will be Wetzel's Pretzels. On September fifth, there's a flower arranging class. There is a fee associated with that one, but you will get to take home a bouquet of flowers. September thirteenth, I think we all know the Lathrop Village Music Festival. The Recreation Committee will be helping with the Kid Zone, which will have balloonists, face painters, obstacle course, and all sorts of fun for the family. September twenty-sixth is our next trivia night and then October eighth is a puzzle night, which is a puzzle contest, jigsaw puzzle, where groups will compete against each other using the same puzzle to see who can solve it or create it first, so that's it.
Thank you. Street Committee? Have anything?
No, nothing.
Okay, thank you. Sophomore Public Schools?
Nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Any unfinished new business? None? Public comments, speakers are limited to three minutes. You may speak about, just about anything you want to.
First of all, thank you for short-circuiting the first thing I wanted to ask about, which is the new, what I thought was going to be a tower, but turned out to be a utility pole. And I guess you saved some money, I'd love to know how much, I don't know if that was mentioned just now. Because I was gonna ask, gee, is that a hundred thousand dollar utility pole? Apparently not. I'm still questioning a bit, you know, that, hey, this new pole is only nominally taller than the existing tower. But I understand maybe there's some engineering concerns there, that the metal tower, putting outriggers on the metal tower, the metal towers are interfering with signals and maybe that went into this. But thank you for saving us some money. The other thing I wanted to ask for feedback, progress report on, is this. The number one source of litter in Lathrop Village, which arrives in our ditches every week. This is the right way to do this. We get this in the mail every week and I throw it out, I put it in the recycling. Some people might use it to line their bird cages, some people might actually read the, you know, ads from the fine establishments here. But in any case, I don't have to dig it out of the ditch like this. And I was reminded of this on Sunday when a gentleman was riding a bicycle around the area picking up litter. I didn't have a chance to thank him because he didn't pass by my house, but I noticed him up the street digging into ditches, getting stuff out. So previously, the city attorney had indicated to me that he might write a letter, but I realize that the city attorney operates at the pleasure of the council. So I'd love to hear an update, was a letter sent? If a letter was sent, has there been a response? And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wanna be heard?
I have a series of questions that I would like to have answered particularly by Mayor Garrett and Councilor Jennings. In nineteen fifty-three, the Southfield Area Chamber of Commerce was established and it's still going strong. Has a lot of activities and networking, does a great job. Yet all of a sudden, this year in April, I think it was, we get the Lathrop Village Chamber of Commerce by Mark Watts. So I'd like to know why we need that, why we already are a part of an organization that has functioned beautifully. Now, I think the answer to that, it was so Mark could bring something called Boys to Men into Lathrop. So my question is, do we have so many problems in Lathrop with deadbeat fathers that don't mentor their children, that we need an outside organization? Now, my answer, I'm pretty sure is no. I'm pretty sure Lathrop fathers and male relatives look after their kids. So then why do we bring Boys to Men into Lathrop? Why is Mayor Garrett on fundraising for them? And why at the same time, our long-term Lathrop Village organizations that have been service organizations, raising money for charity, doing work for charity? The Lions Club this year went down, been around since nineteen fifty-three and it went down. Were the male members of council on that organization? Did you work out to keep it going, to recruit people for it? How about you, Mayor Garrett? The Women's Club is on life support, I think we all know. Yet, to the best of my knowledge, you've never been a member of it. Why is it we're bringing an outside organization into Lathrop when people have limited time and limited resources? When our long-time service organizations are withering on the vine? And I can't see that they have had much in the way of support from members of this council. These organizations, like the Women's Club, like the Lions Club, and there's a host of other ones that have disappeared, have provided tremendous service. And they needed help. They didn't need Mark to bring in a brand-new organization in competition with the Southfield Area Chamber of Commerce that has been going since nineteen fifty-three and doing a great job. And when, from what I can see of his organization, it basically has one function, to service people who don't live in Lathrop, while our long-term Lathrop organizations disappear.
Anyone else wanna be heard? Sorry to laugh, the irony.
Lauren Barris. Yeah, I'll start that with irony because she doesn't live here either, so. Anyway, I wanted to bring up the Lathrop Village Music Festival, September thirteenth. I want to thank our volunteers, we have forty-one volunteers from Lathrop and surrounding communities. And all of our volunteers returned unless they had a conflict, which is amazing. We have five food trucks, we have twenty-seven vendors, we have a full bar, we have nine bands. All of it completely funded by sponsors. And so I want to thank my sponsors too. We've got some great sponsors, we'll have them advertised as well. And one of our spons, one of our trucks, excuse me, one of our booths will be the Southfield Chamber of Commerce. And we're going to have the Lathrop Village Chamber of Commerce. We'll have them both here. Boys to Men is an organization that is in Lathrop Village. They have an address in Lathrop Village. They've been established in Lathrop Village for some time and have been a great asset to the community. And we're looking forward to having them at the Lathrop Village Music Festival. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wanna be heard?
So we have, I'm sorry, Mayor comments. I, do we write a letter to?
We, I did turn it over and provided the information to the code enforcement officer, he was gonna follow up, I don't know what the status of that.
Code enforcement sent a formal alert to them, we'd never received, never received a response.
Okay. I will say that if any residents go online and do what you're supposed to do online, I have not received another one since I did it, so.
I have.
You have?
Oh, I know.
Yeah, yeah, and then the fine, no, no, in the fine print, you know, in the circular, it says like contact or go to this website to request that you be taken off the distribution list, but that it may take some time for that to happen.
I haven't even received it.
But I did have a period where I wasn't getting them and then I started getting them again.
Okay, well.
So I filled out the form again, we'll see. But it doesn't address, I mean, the letter is really the form.
The letter was sent and I guess it, it does have to be, do a follow-up or something regarding it. I just don't receive it. I don't even know how to unpack what you said right now because it was deemed just to me and Jalen, which within itself caused me pause. But it seems like we're the only ones that stand out for one specific reason, but we won't go there. So then you said, why was Lathrop Village's Chamber of Commerce forum? I have no idea because I'm not a part of it and nor was it something that the city put together. That was something that someone, being Mark, put it together himself. Boys to Men being for deadbeat dads. I don't think that that's what it was for either. I think that is boys to men, growing children to become specifically boys. Are we gonna talk about people that live in Lathrop and don't live in Lathrop? Do you wanna do that? Okay, so you keep coming and interrupting our city council meetings and saying what we should and should not do in Lathrop and you haven't lived here for almost over twenty years. So I find that ironic that you're complaining about someone else that does live in Lathrop and does have a business in Lathrop, but you haven't been here in twenty years, don't pay taxes whatsoever here, but we keep giving you time because I think we're being very gracious to you. But that's neither here nor there. To answer your question again, we have nothing to do with Lathrop Village, City Council, no, City Council, excuse me, the Chamber of Commerce. And regarding my, ah, it's just me talking. Regarding the fundraising that you're saying that I do, I want you to show me proof of where I've done any fundraising for the Lathrop Chamber of Commerce. Proof and then we, and then we'll go from there once you show me the proof of that. Did I answer, I'm not going back and forth with you, Ms. Diane, Ms. Diane, we're not going back and forth with that. I'm just, okay, that, okay, so, that's not it.
There was a question about support for the Women's Club and the Lions Club. The Women's Club has a partnering agreement with the city.
I forgot to say that part. And I did donate to the Women's Club and you know what happened? I bought a ticket and I, I joined it and then I went to the event and they wouldn't let me sit down. They didn't have a place for me to sit. So I did not join again because what was the point of me buying something and I could not participate in that? I think everybody up here, everybody was on council, remember? You remember that? Okay, so you weren't on council, but we remember that clearly. So that again, what you said was wrong. So when it comes to, what else?
The other thing I wanted to say about Lions Club support, I've never seen anybody, as long as I've been on this council, I've never been contacted by anybody from the Lions Club. I've never seen anybody who's a member of the Lions Club. I've never been contacted by anybody from the Lions Club. I've never seen anybody who's a member of the Lions Club in this room. I've never been asked to participate in the Lions Club as long as I've been on the city council. So I had no idea that the Lions Club was considering folding. If I had been contacted by that, about that, I would have tried to have done something about it. I can't speak for anybody else in this council, but, you know, when people don't ask for help, I don't know how we're supposed to magically divine that they need the help.
So I think, I think I answered.
You didn't adjourn my question.
Actually, I did. The answer is you were wrong, once again, in that you, I did participate in the one. I'm not going back and forth, Ms. Diane, so this is this, that, Ms. Diane, we're done, so you were wrong. So was there anything else that anybody else wanted to say?
I don't know about any.
It's a lot.
I actually wanted to offer the mayor an apology, because in a study session, we were discussing the policies related to flags. I was incomplete in how I spoke about what you were presenting as your position on the flags. We were talking about how, you know, I, I made a, you've made a statement that was clarifying your position, and I made a statement thanking you for clarifying your position, and you were, challenged me, why, why, you already know what my position is, because we've talked about this. We have texted about this. So I, I feel like in that moment, I was unclear about, I did not state that we had had a conversation, we had texted about this before, and left it kind of assumed that people would understand that I already knew what your position was, and I didn't, wasn't clear about that. So I felt it was the right thing to do to offer you an apology, because I, I just felt like I managed that terribly, and I can do better. And I need to give you credit for the work that you do to express and be clear about what your position is on anything that we're dealing with in the council. And I really appreciate you doing that, and you deserve that credit.
I'm not emotional, but oh, thank you. That's so sweet. I was really, I really appreciate that. Thank you. I'm going to be your friend now.
But that's not why I did it.
I'm just kidding. Is there anything else?
Well, I mean, just really briefly, I, I understand that there are, in fact, opportunities to serve in Lathrop. There are maybe some positions on, I know on Planning Commission. I don't know if there are other opportunities for residents to maybe get involved in. Can you perhaps speak on that?
Yeah, so the two that come to mind right now would be, one, open on Planning Commission, will be technically open at the end of this month, once Chairman Les' term ends and he's not renewing, so that'll be on the agenda next month for council. And then we do technically have one opening on the Historic District Commission still. We advertise it once, get someone appointed, and then we take a couple of month break, so we can hopefully get people re-interested later. So that will start being advertised again probably within the next couple of months.
Okay, so I, you know, I want to encourage our residents sometimes. Sometimes it seems like maybe it's a lot to serve our community, but it is obviously, you know, rewarding experience, and I think it's so important for our residents to, you know, become knowledgeable, get involved. I think that, you know, there's an election coming up. There's people running. I think there's even people who, you know, are interested in becoming write-in candidates. You know, I want to encourage people to get involved. I mean, I, none of us are getting paid to be here. We, we volunteer our time, our, you know, because we love the community and we want to serve the community, and we want to encourage other people to, to, to become involved. It's, it's very, very rewarding. So just my pitch, we, you know, sometimes it's, it's a little challenging, but it is ultimately very rewarding, and I would encourage more people to get involved.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else?
Sure. I was going to say, so I'm looking at the Boys to Men's website, and it says, "Welcome to Boys to Men, a nonprofit organization dedicated to empowering young boys to become strong, independent men." No one, nowhere in there does it say that these children have no fathers. No one, nowhere in there, are we talking about deadbeat parents? You don't know what these individuals have and where they come from. So it's just disgusting that you would say that on camera, and I'm disappointed in you, because sometimes you have great points, but today, you've been disgusting.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to, to say anything? And I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
We are adjourned.